While I'm not Greg, I'm his dad Phillip. I'm coming in his place. One time Jesus said to the people, they said, "Show us the Father and it will suffice." He said, "When you've seen me, you've seen my Father. So whatever you see me, you see my Son." So it doesn't seem like it's been a month since I was here last, but time goes by. Let us bow our heads for prayer. Heavenly Father, we praise you this night, Lord, for another time to meet together to do business, Lord. As you said, I've come to do business for the King. Lord, we pray that you'll bless everyone. God, every heart may be open, Lord, to receive what you would have us to receive this night. Strengthen us, Lord, in you, as the Bible said, "Come now, let us reason together," saith the Lord. And that's what we plan and hope to do this night. So bless each one, God, as this agenda is fulfilled, we'll praise you in your name. Amen.
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 Thank you Reverend Yerri. With that then, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of City Council, July 5th, 2016. Let's start by standing and pledging the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'll ask Mrs. Hoffman to take roll call.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Burke?
Here.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Here.
Ms. Skidmore?
Here.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Here.
Ms. Pitts?
Here.
Ms. Kyle?
Here.
Ms. Cahill?
Here.
Mr. Cahill?
Here.
Mr. Skidmore?
Here.
Mr. Blankenship?
Here.
Mr. Howard?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. You've received a copy of the minutes for the June 7th, 2016 regular council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mrs. Sudcamp. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda for this evening. You've received a copy of the agenda for the July 5th, 2016 regular council meeting. Are there any additions to be made at this time? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Motion by Mr. Howard, second by Mrs. Skidmore. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We'll move on then to the special presentations. The first up, we've got a business spotlight. We've got Mr. Mitch Hatfield here. Mr. Hatfield, please come up to the mic and tell us a little bit about your company. Welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to say thanks to Mayor and City Council and City Admin for letting us be here tonight. Just wanted to introduce ourselves. We are not a new agency, but newly improved. We moved from our Latonia office in March of this year, where we had been in force as an agency since 1927. We recently had merged with a larger agency group that lets us have access as an independent agency to dozens more companies to service our customers that we originally had, and we realized that we just were out of space and needed more room with our growing clientele. So we moved in March of this year, and we are an independent agency, which just basically means that we represent multiple companies. We don't work for just one company, we work for you, the customer, and with that, we are able to kind of fit your life's puzzle pieces together to see how that goes together with what your needs are for you and your family and your businesses. With me is Jennifer Jasper. Combined, we have probably over almost 50 years insurance experience. I've been in the business for over 25 years myself, and besides individual homes, life, businesses, we also do a lot of city and municipality insurances. Jennifer, is there anything you'd like to?
I grew up here. I'm really excited to be back in Erlanger, serving my community. And I graduated from Lloyd in 96, went away to college, got married, moved back here about four years ago, and I'm just really excited to be back in my community. I handle a lot of the commercial insurance in the agency, and as Mitch said, handle a lot of the municipalities as well.
All right, wonderful.
Just thanks again. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming out. Nice to meet you. And that's Hummel Hatfield Agency. I don't know if we said that or not. Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda, we have an oath of office ceremony. Chief?
Mitch's father, Steve, was my first... is that your father?
That's right.
He was my first insurance agent when I came across the river 150 years ago. Good evening. Tonight, we welcome a new member to our department. With the implementation of Lieutenant Rhonda Wolfe moving into a full-time administrative position, opened up a never another shift rotation, a 24/48 rotation on our department. That has now been filled, and we are going to be introducing him tonight. Tanner, come on up. Tanner has completed his orientation with our department. He's a Kentucky native, growing up in California, Kentucky. Is that part of Kentucky somewhere out there?
Out.
He graduated from Bishop Brostard High School. After graduation, he attended Cincinnati State, where he received his fire and EMS certificates. He looks to, and I know he was currently enrolled, this might be dated, he was currently enrolled at Cincinnati State, but I know Tanner is pursuing his fire science degree and also his paramedic license. Prior to coming to Erlanger, he worked part-time for Campbell County District 1 and Kenton Community Fire Department. He also spent two years as a Central Campbell Fire District intern. Well, he's from California, Kentucky, so he enjoys hunting, which goes without saying, fishing, baseball, softball, and other various activities. I see his family is here tonight, and this October, it's going to be a very eventful year for Tanner. In October, he will marry his fiancee, Lindsay, who is standing right here by his side, who will hold the Bible for him, and they plan to move into the house that I think he built in Alexandria.
Rehabbing.
Rehabbing. There we go. So he's been very busy. Anyway, let's welcome Tanner, and then we'll swear amen.
Thank you. Come on up here.
Hey Tanner, I grew up in California too. Yes. No, and I do not hunt.
All right. Tanner, if you will raise your right hand and put your left hand on the Bible. There you go. All right. "I, Tanner Schmidt, do solemnly swear to do my duty as a firefighter EMT for the City of Erlanger to the best of my ability, to serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity, to serve the citizens of the City of Erlanger with compassion, courage, and integrity, and to uphold the laws and constitutions of the United States of America, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and the City of Erlanger, so help me, God." All right, welcome.
Congratulations.
Next up, we've got some service pins.
Okay, before I get to the service pins, we have a special award tonight. Many of you on council, those other in the audience here, probably know this next gentleman. Mr. Ifsek, come on up here. Andy started as an explorer, excuse me, back in May of 1996. He then moved on to volunteer status in April of 1999, received his firefighter certification in 2001, followed up two years later by becoming, receiving his EMT certification. Part-time in October of 2004, but I think he was recruited heavily by Erlanger Fire Chief Bill Martin when he went to Hebron, because that's where he got, that's where he ended up. So, fine place to end up, that's where Andy's been for a while. He does live in Hebron. His wife Katie is here tonight, his daughter Samantha, and I believe Andy's parents are here as well. What we're doing tonight is, we have, we've recreated in our SOG's honorary and lifetime membership awards. Andy's celebrating his 20 years of service within our department, and tonight, he receives a very well-deserved honorary membership plaque from our department, recognizing his years of service and the past work and effort that he has put into the department. We want to thank Andy tonight. It's yours. I know he's a man of few words, so I don't know if we're going to get anything out of him.
Well, I appreciate the award, and just thank you. It doesn't seem like 20 years, but it has been. Erlanger's a good place. I miss it, working there, but yeah, that's about it.
Congratulations.
Next on the agenda is Mr. Kappa. Joe became a full-time member on June 20th of 2011, celebrating his five-year service pin. He is a firefighter medic with our department, is an SRT medic, he's also in charge of personnel bios, photographs, and the like. I got to know Joe when we both went down to Frankfurt to train to become SRT medics, but that's for another time and place. He's married to his wife Jennifer. She's got a ticket to heaven. Two sons, Joey and Brennan, and they currently live in Indiana, which we won't even get into. I've got California, Kentucky, and now Indiana. Joe is a great member of our department, he's dedicated to this department, he cares about the members of this department, he cares about the people that he serves, and he's a blessing for our department, and tonight, we want to honor him with his five-year service pin.
I didn't prepare a formal speech, but as I was driving the long trek from Indiana to Erlanger today, had time to reflect, and of course, seeing Tanner being sworn in, it brought back some old nostalgic memories from over the last five years. I remember during my interview, which I'm sure a couple of our council members were on, I made the promise that if you put your faith and you trusted in me, I would always give you my best, and I would always do everything with my power to serve the citizens and members of Erlanger. I'd just like to renew that commitment after the five years tonight, and say thank you once again for putting your trust and your faith in me, and for as long as I'm here, I will continue to do my best to make you proud and to serve the City of Erlanger. So, thank you once again.
Thank you, Joe. Although unable to attend tonight, there are also two other members receiving five-year service pins. Lieutenant Huth, our full-time medic on red shift, was out of town for the holiday weekend, visiting his family in Pennsylvania, so he could not be here tonight. And another used to be prior full-time member before leaving for Newport, Ryan Whaley. Ryan Whaley. I get the Whaelys all mixed up. Is celebrating his five-year pin tonight also. He could not make it, he is on shift at Newport tonight, so I just wanted to thank them for their service as well.
All right, thank you, Chief. All right, do we turn the mic over to Chief Wilson? All right.
Pat, Kim, Shirley, Aaron, come on. We're going to do them all at once, if I can remember everything, because I don't have a piece of paper this time. But I just got remembered, I just got reminded of everything that they've accomplished, so. Start with, oh, we'll start with Shirley Pack. She's, come on, Shirley. She's been a dispatcher with us now for five years. She has 11 years' experience. She's one of our certified training officers, CTOs. She's also one of our crime analysts and our TAC officer. Shirley is very diligent in her duties as our TAC compliance officer. She was the reason that we scored a 100% last year on our audit from the state. She does a wonderful job. All the officers appreciate the hard work she puts in every day. She goes over and above, and if I can find it, put these things on, it would help. That's it. Very proud to present her with her five-year pin. Next up is Aaron McNeil. I cannot believe it's been five years since you've been here. It has. I'm getting old. Anyway, Aaron came to us from the Kenton County Jail. He's been with us for five years, he's one of our FTOs now. He was very persistent in getting a job here, which has paid off for him. I think now he has, how many people are under you now? He's been here five years, I think he's got 18 people under him, 18 to 20? That just goes to show the turnover that we've had with some of the older guys in the last five years. Aaron's also one of our FTOs, and he brings with us his junior.
Hayden and Parker.
Parker, his wife, and his mother and father in the audience. Aaron's been a great asset to the department, and we hope that he stays with us for many years to come. And here's your five-year pin.
Last five years have flown by, and I'm looking forward to the next 20. It's great to be a part of the Erlanger family.
Sergeant Kim Claire. Seems like we were just up here not too long ago, giving her her sergeant stripes. Not giving them to her, but she earned them. She was our first female police officer that was ever hired, she's now our first female police sergeant. She's held various positions. She was a field training officer, she was a detective, what else? She was a hostage negotiator for the SRT team. Yeah, see, my memory is failing now. But she's been with us 15 years, she's done excellent job, she's just getting her feet wet as a sergeant, she's doing a fine job as a supervisor. I hear nothing but great things about her, and she's currently on night shift, and I was kind of surprised, but she likes it, she excels there, and she's doing a great job. I hear nothing but good things, because I'm not out at night, because I can't stay out that long.
I would just like to take the time to thank everybody again. The 15 years that have gone by seem to have flown. It has been outstanding. I love working here and being part of the Erlanger family, and I'm looking forward to continuing and enjoying my new position as a sergeant, so thank you again.
Thank you, Chief.
Pat Colura.
Taught me to shoot.
Shame on you. Somebody like that had to handle a firearm. I can't say enough about Pat. He's been here for 25 years. He was here when I started. He served as a full-time police officer for 22 years, 23 years? 23 years. He retired. Pat has served in almost every capacity that the Police Department has. The ones that he probably hasn't served in are the ones that have been created since he's not been a full-time officer. He's our driving instructor, he's our firearms instructor, he's our firearms maintenance program manager. He is our, he was an FTO. He was one of the ones that implemented the original FTO program. He has, like I said, he's held every position here. Pat now works for us in a part-time capacity, he works about 20, 25 hours a week. He still does the firearms maintenance, it's three days a week. He fills in various jobs. He's our expert on use of force. He's trained probably, well, half of them are probably retired now, the ones that he's trained, but he's been involved very deeply and personally in this department for the last 25 years. His family can't be here, they're grown up, they're all working. His wife's at home, I'm sure, coaches also, the cross coach for, what school now?
Summit.
Summit Country Day. I can't keep them all straight, you've been coached a lot of places, so. He stays very busy with that. Pat's been an invaluable resource to the department and the city for the last 25 years, and hopefully, he's going to stick around and give us a few more. So with that, I'm honored to give him his 25 years.
Yeah. I very much enjoyed working here. I still love policing, especially here. Hopefully, get another five, 10 years out of this old body, and thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Chief. Yes, GD?
Since we got all these firemen and police officers here, can I make a comment?
Yes.
I know it shouldn't go into correspondence, but I can't wait, I want these guys to hear this, because on June 2nd, I had to use Erlanger Dispatch Fire Department EMS. I've sat up here for 20-plus years and listened to many stories about what a great job they do, and listened to it time and time again, and it just makes me more proud. But the day you have to make a phone call and use them, I had to do that on June 2nd, I had my wife call. I lost the use of both my legs, didn't know what happened to me, scared to death, been here all my life, never had to use them for anything, and I just thought, you know, the time of your life had happened, and it did happen that day. And Rhonda Wolfe's team was the team that showed up at my house. Dispatch stayed on the phone with me and my wife until they got there, and they took care of me. And I live in a house with some steep stairs, an old house, and they got me out of that house, I don't know how that they did. I just want to thank them, because they are as good as everybody tells me they are, and we hear it all the time up here, and when you finally use them. I want to thank each and every one of you for what you do, because you helped me out, and today, I'm back walking again. I do have a use of a cane, but I'll be getting rid of that within a week or so, going to physical therapy, and I just want to thank the Fire EMS and Police Department Dispatch for taking care of me and my wife, because they did a tremendous job, and I always hold that in my heart for what you guys done for me. And again, I just want to say thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dunhoff.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is our mayor's report. I'm going to make this brief. We've continued to stay very busy recently. In a few minutes, you're going to hear a little bit more about the Norfolk Southern Bridge and the update on the status of that from Mr. Vioxx. As a lot of you are aware, we've had the issues with the sidewalk on Nelson Road and the easements involved there. And Mr. Bogard and Mr. Milliken and I have spent some time going door-to-door there, and also talking with the residents who are involved, the people who would have to sign easements. And we have listened to the reason why people weren't as receptive to those easements, and we think that if we make some very minor adjustments to the sidewalk, that everybody's going to be on board. And since we've talked, since we've talked more about those changes, there have been a lot of people, and pretty much everybody 100% has said that they're in agreement. So, you know, I think from that point, we're going to have a couple of different options. You know, this year, we've got money set aside to continue the sidewalks on Narrows Road, so my hope would be that we could come back to this Nelson Road project in the next fiscal year, or since we didn't use those money, if we could reallocate them in the next year. We can talk more about that as time goes on, but ultimately, our plan is get all the easements signed, get everything finalized on that front before we come back and try to do this I'm also excited, this evening, I think a lot of council has read the proposed vacant property review commission, but that's something that we're not going to be, we're not going to be doing anything with that tonight. But there again, that's something that I'm excited to move forward. This is giving us another tool in the toolbox when we're dealing with blighted and vacant With that, I think we'll move on to the next item. Next up, we've got the reports of committees. First is public safety, the police. Mrs. Sudcamp, Mrs. Kyle?
Yes. Our annual performance evaluation meetings were conducted on all employees, police department personnel, and recruit Officer Brian Coines...
Name's Kunis.
I cannot get that name right for whatever. Kunis has started his field training, and I'm pretty impressed with this, Brian's a retired air marshal with 20 years of sworn service, so I think he's going to be a good recruit. And our detectives are investigating a smash-and-grab burglary that occurred the early morning hours of Memorial Day. Suspects broke into the Speedway Gas Station, and they took cigarette cartons. Command staff and Sergeant Sterling met with city officials and the owner at Super Bowl to discuss the ongoing cut-through problems. And our police K-9 dispatch and command staff participated in the annual touch-a-truck at Lloyd High School on June 23rd. And firearms qualification training was conducted at the Florence Police Range with all sworn personnel. Police baton, rifle, and pistol training were highlighted.
Several meetings were attended with officials coordinating the I-75 payment replacement project. Yay. The project is underway, the project will be round the clock, well into October of 2016. The ramp from Donaldson northbound 75 to 75 will be shut down for several weeks starting on July the 8th. The department has finished installing a new camera upload station from Wolfcom Incorporated. Wolfcom provided the gear and software at no charge. Officer Shepherd attended the annual Kentucky School Resource Officer Conference in Richmond. Our response time analysis is underway. Chief Wilson directed a review of all police calls in 2016 to determine response times on emergency and non-emergency calls in each of three districts. Clerk Riffle worked several days to compile the data currently being reviewed. Chief told me that it took her seven, 10-hour days to compile this.
Wow.
Yeah, impressive. And probationary call taker Raven Kane has completed her call taker training. She will be working as a third person in the dispatch center, answering both 911 and administrative calls. Her primary time slots will be evenings and weekends where the call volume is greater, and Chief is in the house.
All right, thank you, Chief. All right, next up, we have then under public safety also, Fire EMS. Mrs. Skidmore, Mr. Meyer?
During the month of June, there were 317 total incidents, with 10 of those being fires. We had 75 inspections that were completed and 176 total publication, public education contact points.
Chief's in the house. Anything, Chief?
Nothing.
You did a bunch earlier, didn't you? With all your awards.
That'll be the day.
All right, thank you, Chief. All right, next, we've got Public Works. Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, I would like to thank Rodney Snow and Kevin Quinn of Public Works for successfully completing their basic work zone and Flagler RE certification on June 7th, and I would like to thank Public Works and Park and Recreations for the good job that they're doing on staffing the events on all the parks and how they're keeping them up. That's all I have, and we're in the house.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bogard. All right, next up then, we have administration. Mr. Howard?
Yes, I have one report on property taxes. So far in the fiscal year 1516, we've collected $4,167,364. In June, we collected $7,980 of that, and we've we've collected $4,167,364. In June, we collected $7,980 of that. And we still have $52,095 which are still liquid for this tax year, so.
All right.
I have the upcoming events that we still have left for the summer. And on 7/7, which is Thursday, this Thursday, the Cincinnati Circus will be at the Depot Park. And there will be jugglers, magicians, tightrope, and juggling workshop. Free dinner will be provided by Erlanger Elsmere Schools for children 18 and under. Adult meals will be available for purchase. Bridges will be distributing free bike, bicycle helmets to children in attendance. So that should be something that if you're looking for a helmet for your child, there's free ones there. And then the Peanuts Movie at Flagship Park on 7/15, which is a Friday. And the Peanuts Movie is there. The movie will start at dusk. Bring blankets and chairs and come early for some fun summer games. Kona Ice will be available for purchase and the city will provide free popcorn and punch. And then on 7/21 Thursday at the Flagship Park, the Grateful Dads will be in concert. And if some of you remember, Brian Hammond was on the Erlanger City Council many years ago and Brian is a grateful dad. So anxious to see him in concert.
I think that's going to be interesting.
And on 7/28, which is a Thursday, is Cherry Hill Swim Night. Join us on a hot night and a cool swim at Cherry Hill Swim Club located at 705 Peachtree Lane. This fun event is for Erlanger residents only, so bring a valid ID. Concessions will be available for purchase and see you all at the pool. And that's it. And Sheri?
I don't have anything further.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Hoffman.
What time is the circus at the Depot?
I actually think I saw, it isn't written here, but I think it's 7:00.
That's why I thought it was 7:00 as well.
7:00.
Okay.
In the concert?
6:00.
Oh, is it 6?
I don't have it either, but I think that's, I think they're all 7:00.
No, it's, the circus is 6:00 to 8:00.
The circus is 6:00.
Circus is 6:00 to 8:00 Thursday.
And then is the grateful dads, is that 7?
That may be.
I think it is. I don't know.
I'm not sure. I just know about the circus.
Okay. You're a juggler or a tightrope walker?
I'll check the website.
Kids will.
Yeah, 6 o'clock. It is 6.
The circus and the concert?
7 o'clock.
7 o'clock concert? We'll believe you. Okay.
All right. Good. Thank you for clarifying. If I could just go back for a second, there was one thing I forgot. Not to put you on the spot, Mr. Bogard, but I do have a quick question for you. The Stevenson Crossing, the rail crossing, is that done? Done? Is that? Okay. It's not completed. Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Then the next thing on the agenda is under Economic Development Finance, Mr. Blankenship, Mrs. Pitts?
This will be brief. So on June 30th, the fiscal year 2016 books were successfully closed and rolled over to fiscal year 2017. The finance staff is now in process of completing the closing process for fiscal year 2016 and preparing the records for the annual audit. And Steve's in the house.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bodie. I will add one thing there that Steve provided us with just before the meeting. In our budget, in the fiscal year 17 budget, we had budgeted $341,000 in the municipal road aid fund. And we just got word from them of what the actual number is. And the actual number is about 2% higher, 355,000. So that's good news. So, thank you for providing that for us, Steve. All right. The next item on the agenda is codes, building, and zoning. Mr. Dunhoff?
Okay. On June 21st, 2016, the Building and Zoning Committee met and discussed the following. Request for zoning text amendment to add funeral homes as a conditional use in the R1C Zone. Mr. Bill Mullins, owner of Mittendorf Boulevard Funeral Homes, addressed council about this desire to purchase the old church on Narrows Road at the intersection with Brightleaf Boulevard to operate a funeral home. However, the zoning presently does not permit this use. Mr. Mullins requested that the city amend their zoning text at the R1C Zone to allow funeral home as a permitted use, providing they are located on either an arterial or collector street. The committee's action, after hearing Mr. Mullins' plans and receiving comments from other council members who were in attendance, the committee makes a motion to have the city attorney, Jack Gatlin, prepare a resolution allowing David Hawn to file an application with the Kenton County Planning Commission to amend the text of the R1C Zone to permit funeral homes as a conditional use, providing they are located adjacent to an arterial or collector street. Also, the Building and Zoning Committee would like to request a committee meeting on July 19th for the following. Want to discuss the zoning of the property on Houston Road, which we, under the legislation part of the agenda, will be declaring surplus property. Two, to discuss how we will proceed to dispose of the property we declare surplus. And three, to hear an update on the text amendment council previously approved to file an application with Kenton County Planning Commission to allow limited commercial uses as conditional uses as well as allowing residential uses. This is the request initiated by the owners of the property at the intersection of Turkey Foot and Stevenson. We had something come back from the planning commission. Dave will talk to us about it at that committee meeting. So I am requesting a committee meeting on July 19th for those three topics. And Mr. Hawn is in the house.
Do you have?
Just do it orally.
Okay. So, what was it then? Again?
This motion right here.
Oh, okay. All right. So one of the things that Mr. Dunhoff mentioned needs to have the vote of council, the request for zoning text amendment to add the funeral home as a conditional use. So can I get a motion? Motion by Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mrs. Sudkamp? Should we do a roll call vote? We'll just do, okay, we'll just do by voice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carried. Thank you. All right. Then the next item on the agenda is under progress and revitalization. Mrs. Pitts?
I'm going to defer that to Mark.
Since Mr. Cahill's not here and Ms. Pitts wasn't at the meeting, I'll try to recap what occurred at our committee meeting, if that's okay with everybody? I believe we, the chicken request that we had to allow backyard chickens, I believe the committee's request or recommendation will be we disable that for now. I don't think there was anything that came out of the committee discussion that would cause it to move forward right now. The rental property ordinance committee report, you're going to have the second reading tonight of that ordinance. Also, purchasing blighted properties, and I think the Commonwealth blighted properties all go together on both of those. We're also going to be requesting some further discussion about both of those at the July 19th meeting. Had that on the agenda. I believe there has been some work done on an ordinance creating those commissions to look at blighted properties, but we need to further discuss that. So if we could add that to the agenda for the 19th, discuss that also. And the Cherry Hill subdivision park study, I believe there is a resolution that you'll hear later, or municipal order approving that to go into conjunction with the Boone County Fiscal Court to do a feasibility study for the park in Cherry Hill with a $5,000, I believe, limit of what that expenditure will be. So unless anybody else can think of anything else we talked about that night, I think that recaps it pretty much about what happened.
I think that does. Good job.
Thank you.
All right. So you've heard the reports of our committees. Do entertain a motion that they be adopted as presented? Motion by Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mrs. Skidmore. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right. Are there any reports of our representatives this evening? Mrs. Kyle?
Yes. The Historical Society wanted me to let everyone know that Heritage Days will be held on September 18th from 1 to 5 at the Depot and that they are needing vendors. And if you're interested, they have an application form. You need to call Michelle, 858-727-2630, or Pat, 859-727-8959. Or if you need more information, you could probably call the city building also. And they provide music, food, drinks, booths. They have arts and crafts. They have collectibles. They have antiques. They're going to have the carriage rides again. They're going to have blow-up rides for the kids and pony carousel, the petting zoo, just to mention a few things. The cost of the booth, I believe if it's nonprofit, it's free. If it's arts and crafts, it's $15. But if it's a business or food booth, the charge is $100. But they are in need of vendors. So we would like for you to contact the Historical Society. And again, that's September 18th from 1 to 5.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you. Any other reports? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the reports of city operations. First up is our city engineer, Mr. Vioxx.
Yes, sir. The last two years, I guess we've been talking about the beautification, the revitalization of the underpass on Dixie Highway. I told you that the highway department has expressed an interest in supporting us on the project, but they weren't going to spend any time doing anything until they knew for sure it was going to be a project. And we have to have met with them on several occasions. There's been meetings with the railroad too. And the budget has now been passed. We're in the fifth day of the year. It's time to move forward. So we are intending to let the highway department know we're going to start working on a traffic, a plan to manage the traffic along with developing specifications for the painting of the underpass and other repairs. We would like to move on this as quickly as possible. And with that, I guess I'll just tell you that we're going to just jump on it as fast as we can.
All right. Great.
The other things I'd like to report are that you see on the agenda, we received the bids today for the Riggs Avenue Phase 1 pavement replacement. That was the number one project on our priority list for this year. We're going to be taking bids in a short period of time for three streets for resurfacing. I think I mentioned in the last meeting, they're going to be Graves Avenue from Hubbard Avenue to Watson Road, Bartlett Avenue from Dixie Highway to the school, Lloyd High School, and Cowie Avenue from Bartlett Avenue to Locust Street. All three of those streets are in and around the school. And the school's going to start, so we're going to specify the contractor accommodate the traffic to and from the school at the beginning of school and at the end of the day. It's unfortunate our budget year works like this, but obviously we couldn't bid the work until we had the money and specified the projects to be done. So that will be Riggs Avenue and those three streets. That'll be four of the nine. We'll follow that behind that with the second phase of the industrial park on Erlanger Crescent Springs Road, which is Enterprise Drive and Commerce. And we did the first phase this past year. And we're going to be doing Erlanger Road from Hubbard Avenue to Baker Street as soon as the water district has their water project relocated like we did on Riggs Avenue. So we'll probably take bids on it in the fall with construction being in the springtime. As soon as we receive all those bids and we see where we stand on the budget, we'll decide on progressing with the, anything beyond that on our priority list. That's all I have, sir.
All right. Thank you. Do you have an idea?
May I say something, please?
Sure.
Regarding the underpass, I have never seen a dollar amount that we are willing to spend on this project. I, I agree. God, I have fought the railroad when I was on the Renaissance Committee 20 years ago. It's an eyesore. It's horrific. But this is not going to fix the problem. You're going to spend $350,000, $450,000, and it's going to look exactly the same in 10 years. That's my problem with this project. And when I stop and think of all the blighted areas that we have and all of the horrific things that we have in our city for us to try and put a Band-Aid on this underpass, and I'm in total agreement with you. It is an eyesore. It is horrible. But it's not going to last. Many years ago, they redid the underpass down on Pike Street in Covington. And it looked beautiful. They faux painted it. It was absolutely gorgeous. And after we started talking about the underpass, I went down and looked like, look at it. And it looks like hell. So that's my concern. We can use money, monies for so many other things. You know, we could advertise ourselves as having the ugliest railroad trestle in the United States.
We could charge admission.
We could.
We'd do tours.
But, you know, and you're looking at overtime for the police department. I mean, this is a huge project. And I would be all for it if it was going to fix it.
Well, can I address some of that?
Oh, absolutely. Sure.
Okay. So the amount that's been budgeted is around $250,000.
Right.
About 150 of that is painting the steel and fixing the concrete that's spalling. The other 100,000 is to fix the drainage issues that are underneath it. Now, I don't know if you've walked under that underpass?
That's a safety issue. I'll, I'll go along with that.
Have you walked under there recently?
Yeah, it's nasty.
It's a thick, muddy mess.
Yeah.
Now, that's not something that's, you know, once we fix it, that should stay like that for a long time. That's not a 10-year fix. That is a long-term fix.
That's just the sidewalk, though.
But that's, but that's 100,000 of it. That's a major part of it. And it's a major...
But I don't think we're going to get it done for that amount of money that we budgeted.
Well, that's why we design it and we bid it and we make sure we can. You know, nothing says that if we get to that point and it's over budget that we have to continue. Okay? So we've allotted that much money for it.
Well...
And it is important that we stay under 250,000 because once it goes beyond that is when it turns into prevailing wage as well.
Right.
So we need to keep it under that.
Okay. Well, I just want, I want to be on record as saying that I'm against this.
Well, another part of this project...
Only because it's not fixing anything.
Yeah. Another part of this project is, another part of the money for this is to put up a sign on each side of the bridge as well and to talk about the 2016 renovation of the Norfolk Southern Bridge.
And the railroad's going to allow you to put signage on their property?
Well, that's what we're, we have to ask for it. They're not going to just do it for us.
Not going to happen.
Well, okay. They won't if we don't ask.
Well, I agree with that. I...
And the, and part of that as well is that there are, there are businesses located on the corridor there that would like this fix. And they're willing to put their own money, their, their, their private money into the project to see, make sure it gets done. We are allocating the entire amount and my hope is that we are going to be able to get a substantial chunk of that back from some of the businesses, that they're going to pay for the painting portion of it.
I wish you all the luck in the world. I truly do. But I'm dead set against spending the taxpayers' money for this project because it will not do anything but clean it up for maybe five, 10 years. That's just my own opinion.
Okay. Duly noted.
Patty, I'm going to actually agree with you for different reasons, though. I was really shocked because I usually don't agree with you on things.
I know. I'm glad I was sitting.
But it's for different reasons. I think there's other priorities within the city to spend the money.
Well, that's what I said. Look at all the blighted areas that we could fix with that money. And it's ugly. It is ugly, but...
I'm for the 100,000 fixing the drainage.
Yeah.
You what, honey?
I'm for the 100,000 fixing the drainage.
I mean, as what I am too. Because you know what? That's not going to involve all this overtime.
Right.
The danger, the safety issues. They're going to have to close down one side of that bridge and another. And, I mean, it's, it's a big, it's a big deal.
Right. Right.
But I'll, I'll put a sign up.
All right. I do have a question for Mr. Vioxx on this, on the city engineer report. You had mentioned all the bidding that's coming up. Do we have an idea for the timeline of when this bidding is supposed to be? When we, when we should have all the answers on what the costs are?
You talking about the street projects?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. We'll, we obviously were taking, took one today and we're going to board it tonight. I would say we're going to do the three resurfacing within the next month. So that'll be, that'll make four projects. Enterprise will follow within the next thirty days after that, and that'll be Enterprise and Commerce. So that makes the fifth one. Erlanger Road, we're going to go ahead and bid it by fall, probably in September or October, because they can't do it till springtime because of the water district's reconstruction. Once we get those six bid, we'll know what the dollar amount is. We can decide whether we're going to be able to pursue any additional ones by springtime in this year's budget.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? We'll move on to the next report from the city attorney, Mr. Gatlin.
Yeah, as Mr. Fields alluded to, we have began drafting the vacant property ordinance. This, as we discussed a couple of weeks ago, is in compliance with the new sections of KRS ninety-nine, seven hundred through ninety-nine, seven three five, which allows, it's a really hot mic tonight, which allows a city to be a little more aggressive and declare property blighted. This ordinance will establish a vacant property commission. Again, right now, we're circulating it amongst the city staff, and we will bring it up at the next committee meeting to get more input from council on. Also, there are a couple ordinances for first reading tonight, which are somewhat housekeeping ordinances that I think Mr. Han has spoken about in, in prior meetings. One is changing the fees as it relates to the Board of Adjustments, making these fees more in conformance to the actual costs of the city. And the other one relates to providing a discount to state building projects because of them going through the state building permit process. So those are both on for a first reading tonight. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gatlin. Next up is the city council attorney, Mr. Wickman.
Yes, sir. I'm happy to report we made great progress on the codification review. We've got meetings scheduled with American Legal sometime at the end of this month, I believe. And Mr. Gatlin and myself and Mr. Fields are going to meet prior to that to go over our recommendations of the property eleven, eight eleven Stevenson is scheduled for a hearing before Judge Sumi in regard to the possession of the property. That's a motion by the purchaser for the court to award them possession of the property so they can evict the people that are down there now. So we're making progress on that. And the property, property of thirty-four oh nine Cowie, I'm anticipating will probably be up for sale by the master commissioner sometime in August.
Good. All right. Thank you, Mr. Wickman. And then next up, we've got the city administrator, Mr. Fields.
A little more follow-up on the committee meeting that we had. I sent a memo out. We had talked a little bit about code enforcement that night, and I think on the nineteenth, we need to talk a little bit more about it. But I think a lot of the topic of discussion that night was, you know, how, how successful are we at remediating some of these properties without, you know, going through the foreclosure or the lien and, and all those things? So, you know, about fifty percent is, is what we ended up with from July one of last year until June twenty-first, when I ran that report. Were four hundred and forty-three calls, out of four hundred and forty-three, two hundred and twenty-one citations were issued, and two hundred and twenty-two of those were remediated without citations. And out of those two hundred and twenty-two citations, a hundred and twenty-four of them were remediated before they became final, and only ninety-eight of those went to final. So out of four hundred and forty-three for that year, only ninety-eight went to that final stage. So I, I believe we're pretty successful in the way we're approaching this right now. I know everybody is not completely happy with how all those have come out, but that, I think, is a pretty good success rate. A little further up on that, we're getting ready, hopefully next week, to add, since the new budget is, is in, in effect now, we're going to add another part-time codes officer. Just to let everybody know, those switched over today from the police department to, under the supervision of Mr. Han. He was very happy this morning when we swore them in as citation officers.
What did David do? God.
Nothing, nothing. He had plenty of time. He didn't, he didn't...
I know, but he's punished. He's punished. He's good at that.
It was a punishment, yeah. I've had them for thirty years. It was time. No. But, so that, that's moving on. Hopefully, and I think next week, isn't it, David? That hopefully we'll have the other officer starting, a retired police officer. We're hoping to get back here and get into that. I think we've had some success having those retired officers that have that, you know, people skills to deal with these people and get this done. So I was pretty happy about that. Last week, I met with Mr. Wickman and Ms. Quinn about some of the things that we had talked about that night, about getting further descriptions on the report that they do. They're going to add a narrative section to that report, giving us some further explanation, just like Mr. Wickman did the night about eight eleven and thirty-four oh nine Cowie. So we have that. Also, in this whole transition, we're going to be moving all the paperwork from the PD over to the administration side, and we're still trying to figure out exactly how we're going to, we're going to get all that done so we don't miss anything in the tracking. But hopefully, because some of the information, I know we talked about, the way those calls are getting entered into the police system right now, we, I can't tell you out of four hundred and forty-three right now. I can, but it's not easily accessible. We can't mine that data because that information is in the narrative of those reports. There's not a drop-down that we can just search. We're in the process of buying a new building permit system that hopefully we're actually going to move all the code stuff to under David, and it will actually track all the code's violations, the building permits, the zoning permits, and those kind of things. It was already in last year's budget, it's already been planned to do. It's just an added, I think, benefit to us being able to use that and track this maybe a little more efficiently than what we're doing right now. So we have a lot to discuss on the nineteenth, as far as all that goes, too. There were some other questions that night that were asked, and we talked about property tax, and we talked about, you know, where do we go and how, how aggressive do we want to be as far as the number of years or maybe the amounts that people are past due, and when we then actually go through the whole lien foreclosure part of this. Looking on the list, been working with Jennifer in, in the front office, and thirty-three properties are all we have in the city. Now, I'm not including trailers, okay? Forget mobile homes, all right? But we have thirty-three properties that have, that still owe us for twenty fifteen.
Oh, that's ridic, really? That's all?
That's all.
That's impressive.
That is impressive.
So, but now, we need, we have twelve more properties that owe fourteen and fifteen. We have twenty-one properties that owe three years or more.
Oh.
So when we talked about using that three-year, two-year, one-year, we thought that's just some information that we need to really be looking at and, and, and seeing what we want to do at the next committee meeting, talking about how to go forward. We've talked about it for a long time to make sure we have some guidance about where we want to do it. We're not talking about that many properties. I think you heard the report earlier, there was only, what, fifty-two thousand dollars that's outstanding?
Yes.
Yeah, something like that. So, so it's not a great deal of money when you're talking about, it is, but it's, it's not, in the scheme of things, you know, and, and, and the budget, when we've collected over four million, it's kind of, you know, it's this much. So what do we do and how do we go back there and that? So that's some things we need to discuss that, at that committee meeting. Also, I would like to have a special meeting that night on the nineteenth, to have the first reading of an ordinance for the annexation of the property over on Turkeyfoot Road. We were going to have that tonight. However, the new owner of the property has not closed on all the property yet, who's, who's requesting us to annex this property into the city. So this will be a consensual annexation. They haven't closed on all the property. That property should be closed on this week. So I believe that Mr. Gatlin and David and I are going to meet with the new property owner next week, so we'll have everything done by the, by the nineteenth. So if we could have a special meeting to have first reading of that consensual annexation, and it's for the new subdivision that Dries is proposing off of Turkeyfoot Road.
Okay.
Mr. Fields, is that just the new subdivision, or is it the other area that's for sale?
Just the subdivision. Just the subdivision, yes. Yeah, that one wouldn't be consensual at this time. Yeah. So that one. Okay, tomorrow, just some other news on the update on the building assessment. Tomorrow at eight o'clock in the morning, Rick and his people are going to meet with the Murphy Graves and Tremble people at the depot to start doing some assessments of buildings and get some measurements and preliminary. They have the team together. Hopefully, we'll be having a meeting either later this week and/or next week to get the whole scope. So I should be able to tell you all on the nineteenth of the committee meeting about how the schedule's going to go and, and how they do it. Hopefully, we'll have those final answers by then. But this will be the initial meeting. They haven't been up here yet, so this will be the initial one. So just wanted to bring you up to date on that one. I believe that's all I have. You want me to talk about the new hire for Monday? You didn't say anything about it. You want to say it?
What? Oh, the new hire? Yeah.
When you do, you want to do it.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
We've also filled the position. We've offered it to a, a, a young man for the communications and public relations manager. We have offered that position to a Joe Christafield. So we are, he's employed by the City of Florence right now. He's given them their notice, so we, we, we've actually stolen one from Florence. So... All the fire chiefs liked that one, didn't he? So, but he brings fourteen years of experience in government to, to this position. We all think that he's going to be very good at it and hit the ground running. I know Sherri is looking very forward to him coming and taking over his whole website and getting rid of all that for her, get it off her plate. So we're looking forward to that. So hopefully, at the next council meeting, we'll have him here to introduce him. So he should start Monday.
What was his position in Florence? May I ask?
He was a...
Most recently, he was the city clerk.
Oh, yes.
But he, he was hired at, at, he's been the city clerk for about three years, is that right?
I don't know. How long, Sherri?
It's longer than that.
Yeah, you're right, it has.
I know for at least eight.
Okay. So, but he was hired by Florence as a, as a PR, in a PR position. He, his previous work included work at some of the television stations and for the community recorder. But, yeah, seems very capable. We're looking forward to it.
I think actually that's how he got in with Florence, is because he was part of the recorder that covered the City of Florence at the time. I know him.
That name sounds familiar.
Yeah. So hopefully, we'll have him here at the next council meeting. That's all I have.
Okay. There was one thing I was, wanted to get clarified, Mark. On the, the delinquent taxes, so if we look at three, people who've been delinquent for three years, we're looking at twenty-one, twenty-one properties?
Yes, sir.
And people who've been delinquent for two years is twelve properties total?
Right.
Okay. And so, does that, I know Mr. Meyer was the one that had originally requested that. Does that begin to answer your question as far as, so what, where would you lean? Where we start the foreclosure process, then, at two years or three years?
In my opinion, I wouldn't do it any with the two years, but I feel that, I mean, that's really, what, eighteen months? That's fourteen, fourteen tax year, fifteen tax year?
Oh, is it? I was under the impression it's further than two.
You're talking fourteen, the fourteen, two thousand fourteen taxes, two thousand fifteen taxes, and...
Right. I don't know if I understand the question.
So, would two years be eighteen months or that be more than?
I couldn't hear you, sir. I'm sorry.
No, I, I think the, the question was, are we calling somebody one-year delinquent if they, if they only owe two thousand fifteen-year taxes?
When I counted these, it was on the thirty-three, only owed two thousand fifteen. The twelve owed two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen. The twenty-one owed either three or more. So that could have been thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, and some of these are much longer than that. Now, I want to tell you, too, I didn't count all the ones. Well, there, there are a bunch on the rolls that are little properties that are like, I don't know, fourteen dollars a year. A lot of them come from the old Urpenbeck community up at Erlanger Lakes. There's a whole lot of outstanding things from, from way back then. They're still on the books. I know that was all in a court settlement. You know, there's, so there are several other ones on there. There were a couple on there that are two or three dollars, and I'm not exactly sure, you know, but I just didn't even count those. These were the ones that were hundreds or thousands of dollars.
Right.
The ones that, that, that actually would, would, would account for something. But those, those twenty-one are at least three years or more. Okay? So that, was that clarified?
Yeah.
Then?
Thank you.
Yeah. So...
So I think we, we'll talk more about that probably at the next committee meeting, but, you know, one more interesting facet of this might be, one more piece of data. My, my guess, or my gut, would say that at three years, a substantial amount of those properties might, might already be under, in foreclosure?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So maybe it makes more sense.
They're in foreclosure or bankruptcy, one of them, too.
Probably.
So it may make more sense that we initiate that at the two-year mark.
Well, you can't, you're prohibited from enforcing a delinquency for one year.
Yeah, that's right.
So you, the first time you can do it is when they're delinquent for two years.
Okay.
Okay. And that's what we had talked about, when it got to that, that, that second year, and then especially after they get the four notices, that takes it to April. That's almost then two and a half years, every, the first one does. We'd had that conversation with, with, with Mr. Wickman and Ms. Quinn in our meeting last week. Yeah, I, I think they're all kind of different because I was looking at this, and there, there are two of these on, that are three years plus on my street, and I just happened to see them and look them up. Well, lo and behold, then come to find out, and, and I, and I know one of them is, is actually in, in bankruptcy from looking at Mr. Wickman's records and what they were, were doing with that. So, so some of them, and I guess that prohibits us from doing some things on that one, so...
All right. Wonderful. Mrs. Skidmore?
I just had a thought. I don't know if this makes sense to anybody else but me. If you actually focused on the ones from two thousand thirteen, chances are, when you got those taken care of and you were into the next year of taxes, the ones that are delinquent for two thousand fourteen, this year, would also be delinquent again or still. Does that make sense? That you, if you focused on the two thousand thirteen ones first and you did it in stages, your next stage would automatically kind of like be there already because they haven't paid them in two years, they're probably not going to pay them the third year.
Yeah, that's what we were thinking, yeah.
That's just my thought.
I mean, ultimately, we just want to set kind of a guideline.
Right.
So that code enforcement knows that once it hits a certain point that we, we take the next step. All right. Any other discussion, questions? All right. You've heard the reports of the representatives and city operations. To entertain a motion that we adopt as presented, motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mrs. Pitts. All, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. All right, Mrs. Hoffman, do we have any correspondence this evening?
No, sir.
All right. We'll move on then to the citizens and public comments. Do we have anybody signed up to speak this evening? Anne, would you like to come up? Yeah. Please. Just go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ann Isaac.
Well, yeah, when you come on up.
My name is Ann Isaac. Somebody left their fire EMS thing here. I live on Division Street, 413, to be exact. Thank you for listening or letting me speak this evening. I was here two weeks ago when you had your meeting, and I would like to respond to some of the concerns that were voiced by the council members who were opposed to revising the chicken regulations in Erlanger. At that time, I didn't feel adequately prepared, and I've done some research, and so I would like to make some comments about what was said. First of all, I think Mr. Dunhoff had expressed the concern that he was worried if we get chickens, then, if we allow chickens in Erlanger, then the coyote population is going to move up the I-75 corridor from Covington to Erlanger after the chickens. And what I would like to say now is that that's not going to happen, because the coyotes are already here, and they're here because of the deer population, and the deer population is growing. And there are coyotes by the library there, and as long as you have open grassy areas and wooded areas, you're going to have coyotes, you're going to have raccoons, you're going to have possums. They go after the feral cats, the moles, the coyotes, of course, after the deer, and they are the only predator for deer in this area besides us, okay? These are all necessary, how would you say, for a viable ecosystem, and the same with snakes. Mrs. Kyle mentioned the story of blasting the poor snake with a shotgun that had invaded her chicken coop because it ate an egg and got stuck. And snakes, too, there are about twelve breeds, species of snakes that are in northern Kentucky. Only one of them is poisonous, that's the copperhead, and the rest of them, a few of them are big enough to eat an egg, and the rest of them are small enough that a chicken, they can take care of themselves, they will usually, you know, kill the snake. And since the time the Bible was written down, snakes have been maligned. But we must realize, they too are an important part of our ecosystem, and they will eat the rats and the moles and the mice that are, you know, in our area. A conscientious owner of chickens will maintain the coop and, you know, collect eggs a couple times a day if there are snakes in the vicinity. I mean, you don't want to leave temptation out there. Also, she mentions that chickens can be messy. Yes, they can be messy, but it is easily contained and controlled if you have an adequate-sized coop and run, just like we keep, you know, we pick up after our dogs, we change the kitty litter. To have people who want chickens, want healthy chickens, and to have healthy chickens, you have to maintain, you know, the cleanliness of the coop, change the water, change the feed. I mean, this is something that a chicken owner is willing to do. Now, I think it was Mrs. Sudkamp said, well, if you want fresh eggs, just go to Tuys and buy eggs from Tuys. And I think in that respect, she's kind of missed the whole point of why we're raising chickens. It's not just for the freshness of the eggs, it's that we're raising chickens humanly. We know where they come from, we know what they're fed, we have the other, the secondary benefits of the fertilization of our soil, of keeping the insects at bay.
Ms. Isaac, can you wrap it up in about forty-five seconds?
Okay, forty-five seconds. I recently was talking to the University of Kentucky Extension Agricultural Agent, actually for Campbell County, because the Kenton County agent is on sabbatical, and he actually, his main interest is in sustainability and urban agriculture. But I didn't know this, this Mr. Don Sorrell told me that chickens are allowed in Fort Thomas, and they have been for the last seventy years. And I don't think that Erlanger is more of a city than Fort Thomas is. They are able to deal with the problems of the coyotes, of the predators. They have restrictions that everybody abides by, and I think if we look to a place like Fort Thomas for guidance, that, you know, maybe we can come to a workable understanding and allow chickens here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out. All right, do we have any other comments, citizen comments? All right, then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda is bids. We've got the EMS billing, fire EMS. Who's going to report on that? Is anyone reporting on that? Okay. All right, thank you, chief. And then we've got the concrete removal and replacement on rigs.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Beaks?
You go to your third sheet in front of you. We have three bidders. The name of the companies are on the second sheet, but the first column is Straight Edge Construction Company. Their bid was three hundred and sixty-six, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and two dollars. Second bidder was JPS Construction Incorporated at three hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. And the third was TMS Construction Incorporated at three hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. If you go back to the first sheet, you'll see that the bid, even with the anticipated additional work, which you don't need to act on tonight, I normally would ask you to, but I don't think we need it. This would be under our estimate by eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars, so I recommend that we award the work to Straight Edge Construction Company, who happens to be our current contractor on Spring Valley Drive.
All right, we need a vote on that, don't we? We've got a motion by Mrs. Sudkamp, a second by Mrs. Kyle. All in favors, or any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried.
That's all I have, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, do we have any unfinished business to report?
I just would like to say, we can never, ever not have touch a truck. I don't care how hard it rains. That is the coolest thing. Those little kids go nuts.
I go nuts.
Pouring down, pouring down rain, they could have cared less, they're jumping in one thing, not... It was, it's adorable, and I thank everybody in the city that puts that on.
Yeah.
It's awesome.
They do a wonderful job, don't they?
Yeah, they really do.
I'm looking forward to a day when it doesn't rain, so that they can bring in air care.
Well, yeah, wouldn't that be neat?
Yeah.
That would be really, yeah.
Planned the last two years.
I think the fire department, the chief's not here any longer, but I think that they're going to hand out ponchos next year.
All right, all right, is there any new business to discuss? All right, then moving on, we'll move on to the legislation. First one is an ordinance regarding the amended handicap parking, second reading.
This is a second reading. It's an ordinance of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending codified section ninety-seven point three-one, which is also ordinance number twenty-three twenty regarding handicap parking areas on city streets. By summary, this ordinance makes a couple changes. One is it changes the non-refundable application fee of sixty-five dollars to an approval, a fee of one hundred dollars, which will be charged for the installation assigned, which is after the approval of the application. It also does some housekeeping, where it makes it a determination by the director of Public Works and consultation with the chief of police or their designee. And the final part is it does not require the individual that has the handicap parking designation to physically come to the city each year for renewal. They can do that process via the phone, or can mail in a form.
All right, wonderful. Do I entertain a motion to adopt this?
Absolutely.
Motion by Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mr. Blankenship. Any discussion? Okay, a roll call vote.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sudkamp?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke? Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, motion carried. Second one is an ordinance regarding the amended rental property permit, second reading.
This is an ordinance of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending the Erlanger Code of Ordinances, Chapter one seventeen, Rental of Residential Units, as adopted by ordinance twenty-three ninety-two. By summary, this ordinance effectively changes the prior rental housing ordinance and creates a rental registry, where each property owner would be required to provide the city mailing address of each building owned by the landlord, would be required to also provide twenty-four seven telephone information, and to update that information every twelve months.
All right, do I entertain a motion? Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mrs. Sudkamp. Any discussion?
I have one quick question.
Sure.
So, a lot of the stuff that was deleted is taken care of by, like the International Property Maintenance Code and all that, that fills in for the stuff that was deleted. It just kind of condenses, makes it easier.
It's still under the nuisance code, yes.
It still does everything, okay.
Yeah, I don't know if it does everything. You know, part of that stuff was deleted because of some of the case law that didn't support what some of that, what some of it was, so we got a lot of that troublesome stuff out of there.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, a roll call vote.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sudkamp?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, motion carried. Next one is an ordinance regarding the Board of Adjustment fees and notification. This is a first reading.
This is an ordinance of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, establishing filing application fees for the Board of Adjustment, as well as providing notification protocol for any hearing before the Board of Adjustments. In essence, it changes the fees for the request for variance to a non-conforming use to another for a filing fee of three hundred and forty dollars, and changes the conditional use permit to three hundred and seventy-five dollars, as well as codifies all of the sections in the KRS as it relates to notice requirements, as well as changes the filing fee for an appeal to the zoning administrator for four hundred and eighty dollars. These changes were made after a review by Mr. Hahn to determine what the actual cost of the city was.
All right, I ask Mrs. Hoffman to note in the minutes the first reading of that ordinance. Next item is another ordinance, the amended building zoning fees.
This is an ordinance of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending the fees for zoning building and other permits, as adopted by ordinance twenty-two sixty-eight. The only change is there underlined, which is that building permits for state projects shall be one-third the regular city building permit fee.
All right, we'll also ask...
I just have a question about that one.
Sure.
Is that whole section in section one supposed to be underlined? Because the draft that we got didn't have any underlines or striked.
Yeah, that was something that the clerk and I realized about an hour before the meeting, so that whole sentence is underlined.
Good catch. All right, I'll ask the city clerk to also note the first reading of that ordinance. Next item is a resolution regarding municipal road aid.
This is a resolution adopting and approving the execution of a municipal aid co-op program contract between the Incorporated City and the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet Department of Rural and Municipal Aid for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty sixteen, as provided in the KRS, and accepting all streets referred to therein as mean streets, which are a part of the Incorporated City.
All right, we'll note the first reading of that.
No, it's a...
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
It's a resolution, you need a motion.
Oh, excuse me. Okay, so do I have a motion to adopt this resolution? Motion by Mrs. Sudkamp, second by Mr. Dunhoff. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, then the next item is another municipal, oh, excuse me, this is not, I mean, another. It is a municipal order regarding surplus property.
Municipal Order Number oh-seven oh-seven dash sixteen dash oh-one, a municipal order of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, making the written determinations required by KRS eighty-two oh-eight-three for the sale or other disposition of property owned by the city. Attached to the municipal order is the spreadsheet, which discusses the disposal method of the five items which are being sought to have declared surplus.
All right, do I entertain a motion? Motion by Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mrs. Kyle. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is a municipal order regarding the park feasibility study.
This is a municipal order of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, authorizing the mayor to enter into a feasibility study with the county of Boone related to a park near the Erlanger-Boone County border on the west side of the city. Specifically, that Erlanger City Council authorizes the mayor to spend up to five thousand dollars on a joint feasibility study with the county of Boone related to locating a park on the west side of the City of Erlanger, the Boone County-Erlanger line.
All right, do I entertain a motion? Motion by Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mrs. Kyle. Any discussion? Mr. Meyer?
Yeah, I just want to go on the record again, opposing this. I think it's inappropriate for us to spend our money for a park that would definitely be outside the city, in, actually in Boone County. I think it's about a hundred and fifty yards outside of the city limits, so, again, just want to be on the record opposing it.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to point out that a lot of Erlanger citizens will get use of this park, and that's the reason we would be doing it, so that people would understand why we're doing it.
Well, plus, Boone County's going to maintain it. And what other park do we have that they do that? I mean, I think it's a win-win for everybody.
Right, right.
The kids on that side don't have anything, because it's all on this side. So, if the Boone County's maintaining it, I think it's worth a five.
Do we know how many residents have ever asked for a park in that area?
There's over two hundred and fifty residents out there living in Erlanger.
Yeah.
Use our parks over here. And I'm sure that if we ask them, which we probably never have, they would probably say, how come there's no park in Erlanger on this side of town?
And it's definitely an older neighborhood, too.
That's a good point. You know, part of my initial reservation was that we would have to spend the money, you know, as soon as they deem it feasible, that then we'd be asked to spend the money on the park, and that we'd be asked to spend money maintaining it. But one of the Boone County commissioners has assured me that that is not what their goal is. They have no intention of asking us to pay for the park nor to maintain it.
And there are a lot of young families that are moving back in there now.
Absolutely.
A lot of young families.
Yeah, I think we have a lot to benefit from it.
Yeah, I do, too.
And that's why Cherry Hill Swim Club's back open and why they have a swim team.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
All right, so can I ask for a motion? Oh, no, I'm sorry, we have a motion and a second on the floor, excuse me. So, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.[1756.91]